Good evening and welcome to the December 4th, 2018 Millis School Committee. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 37. All meeting videos are also posted to the Millis Public Schools website under "School Committee." All times are approximate on the agenda. I'd like to start with the roll call. My name is Stephen Catalano. I'm the chairperson. Carrie Roach, Secretary.
Here.
Robin Briggs.
Here.
Mr. Conroy is going to be absent tonight. Ms. Gibbons is going to be absent. The superintendent is on her way. She's not here yet. Teacher rep Bernadette Lindgren is here. And student reps Drew O'Reilly.
Here.
Okay. Jody, is anyone signed in for open session?
There is no.
Okay. There appears to be no one here for open session. So the first action item is to consideration to approve the November 20th, 2018 school committee meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Roach.
I move to approve the minutes from 11/20/2018.
Do I get a second?
Second.
A motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. The second action item is the consideration to reduce fees for Metro West Basketball. In your folder or in your packet or on the computer, you will see a request from the president of Metro West Basketball, Mr. Donovan, who is looking to, he's looking for a 50% off the rental fee for Clyde Brown in the Millis High School gym. That would be reducing the fee from $26 an hour to $13 an hour. And this would be for the whole 18-19 school year. Last year, they actually ran open gyms, I think, right up until May. So we want to leave it open. So through the 18-19 school year up to 6/30/2018, I'm sorry, 19, there would be, they're looking for a reduction by 50% of the standard users' fee. There would be no reductions in custodians, any custodians that would have to work due to either open gyms or games on the weekend or practices on the weekend would have to be paid at full cost, which is our standard policy. So that is the request.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Roach.
I move to reduce the gym rental fees for the Metro West Basketball program for the school year of 18-19 by 50%, which is $13 an hour. Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next on the action items is the consideration to accept an anonymous donation of $1,250 for the Mohawk Post. An anonymous donor has come forward with a donation of $1,250 to be used for the continuing publication activities of the Mohawk Post. The funds would be deposited in the Post Students Activity Subaccount to be used as needed for its equipment and operational needs that directly impact the student experience and learning. Because this is over $1,000, all gifts or donations over $1,000s have to be approved by the school committee. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that we accept the donation of $1,250 for the Mohawk Post to be deposited in the Student Activity Fund to be used specifically for that student organization.
Second.
This is a very nice donation. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next is the consideration to accept a used bus bid for two used buses. As a reminder, in 2013, we had a five-year, we started a five-year lease that ended in June 30th of this year. It called, and as traditional, we've always tried to buy buses at the end of the lease. Within the bid document, it called for purchasing two of those buses at the end of the lease for $45,000 each. Unfortunately, when we executed it back in 2013, there was no provision was provided for a purchase of any buses at the conclusion of the lease at any price. To remedy the situation, we issued a bid to purchase two used buses at the specifications equal to or better than the buses, better than one of the buses in question. Three expressions of interest came in. We received only one response from New England Transit Sales, Inc., who supplied the buses for the original lease and whose buses have been, we've been using free of charge pending the outcome of this process. The bid submitted was for $90,000, consistent with the 2013 bid. The funding for one of those buses was approved at the spring 2018 town meeting and the second at the fall 2018 town meeting. So that is what we need to do. This is something we have done traditionally, except the contract language did not call for this, so now we're rectifying the situation, and that won't happen again. But we do need to purchase these two buses, and we've been using them free of charge, which is very, very nice of the company to work with us. So I would take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Briggs.
I move that the school committee accepts the bid from New England Transit Sales in Tingsboro, Mass. and purchase two used, 83-passenger buses in the amount of $45,000 each for a total of $90,000.
Second.
Motion been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
We're cruising today.
Mr. Wigan, thank you for all your hard work on that. I know that. That was extra above and beyond. Thank you. So now we're above board here, and we got our two buses.
Fantastic.
Next consideration is to, next action item is to consideration to re-accept a $6,000 donation from the IORIO Charitable Foundation. We approved this at last meeting, or last meeting. We thought it was going to the high school. In fact, it was going to the middle school. So because this is over $1,000, we need to approve the use of the money or acceptance of the money, the donation. So now we're basically just changing it from going to the high school to the middle school.
I have typo on that. It's IoriO.
IoriO.
Yeah. The members need to correct it.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you for that. So the IoriO Charitable Foundation. And so is it, just as a little side story, a Millis Middle School student approached her grandmother during a fundraiser, and her grandmother in turn offered to make a very generous donation to the school. So a granddaughter asked for some money, and we ended up with $6,000 for the middle school, which is very nice. Can't hurt to ask.
Great.
Cannot hurt to ask. So I would take a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to re-accept the $6,000 donation from the IoriO Charitable Foundation for the Millis Middle School. Second.
Motion been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Motion carries. That is it for action items. Next on the agenda, student reps.
So the Millis Lions Club Speech Contest for the Millis Speech Class Students was held in the auditorium today. Tomorrow, December 5th, there is going to be a half-day, and also this week is the second week of practices for all winter sports students.
Jody, do you have a speech in the competition today?
I did not. I took it last year, though.
Did you win?
No.
Okay. But you participated, and that's all that counts.
Yep.
Good job. Thanks, Drew. Teacher, teacher rep.
The winner of that speech contest was Stella Brulaka.
It's close enough.
And there is a holiday concert on December 20th here at the high school. In grades 1, 3, and 4 came to the high school today to see the Nutcracker performed, and the 4th grade, actually, the 4th grade came today, the 3rd grade came yesterday for a second, 1st grade. And the Nutcracker performance occurred this past weekend here at the school in the auditorium. There were many students involved from the Clyde Brown Middle School and High School.
Excellent.
And everyone seemed to enjoy it.
Excellent. Thank you. So next up is time and learning, special education update. Dr. Marx, would you like to join us up front? Mr. Wigan, are you going up as well, or?
I'm going up.
Okay.
So special education is the way we in schools provide appropriate services and supports to children with disabilities on IEPs so that they can benefit from a free and appropriate public education. And that actually is an expression, so that means free at no cost to the individuals, to the parent, appropriate based on the student's needs, and public, obviously, and education and academics. We also do this, one of the other principles of the law and in the way we operate is in the least restrictive environment. I'm sure this is something that Mrs. Briggs has heard in the past. So least restrictive environment means that we believe wholeheartedly, and research has demonstrated that students with disabilities fare better, learn better, are stronger, what the closest they are to general education. That doesn't mean that's always the right place, but it does mean it is always the consideration. And I'm sure if we think back, and perhaps some of you don't remember, but I remember back when special education was in the basement, and so this is a reaction to that, and it's to show that rigor and high expectations are what we want for all our children. So special education, actually, when folks ask me questions about special education and how we make decisions, it's actually not up to individuals. It's a team process, and it's got, it's based on a lot of family involvement. I'm not going to go through the steps for you, because I think you have these notes in front of you, but it's very prescribed. We perform evaluations. The evaluations are standardized. We determine whether or not a child has a disability. Once that's determined, and do they also need special education or related services in order to benefit from education is the question that's asked. So that is, so step three eligibility is determine the child is then therefore found eligible. We also have a lot of timelines related to special education and how long we have to evaluate, how long before the team meeting, we have annual reviews, three-year reevaluations, et cetera. So we are very much more prescribed and directed than probably any place else in education. Some of that can be tedious, but it really is based on best practices. That's where regulations come from, right? Identified best practices and where we should be. So special education, as identified in the federal IDEA law, talks about instruction that can be in the classroom, in the home, or anywhere else. And it also covers related services. Related services can include transportation, occupational therapy, speech and language therapy, et cetera. Special education, because it is so law-bound, or and because it does involve designing education for students with disabilities, sometimes we just don't agree. When those things happen, the law provides a regulatory response or due process, which is mediation, where someone will come here into the school department and sit, and parents or, and whoever else is involved will come and talk about why the disagreement, what the disagreement is, and we'll try to meet somewhere in the middle. When that doesn't work, or when we feel, or families feel like something's really gone amiss, we can go to, we can go to hearing. And this is a hearing organization called the BSEA Bureau of Special Education Appeal set up in Boston, and there's, and they look at compliance issues. So in the time that I've been here, we've had one mediation, and that was within the first few months I was here, so it was already in process before I got here. What I find happens more often here is when we take other routes, less formal resolution processes, and we reconvene meetings, which is really what should happen, because the decisions about students with disabilities should be made by the folks that know them best, the families, the people that work with them, the therapists, the teachers. So we can reconvene meetings if things weren't clear, if the IEP came home and the parents said, "This is not what I thought we talked about," or "This is different." So we reconvene and try to sort out disagreements. And the other thing is just resolution discussion. So I've had parents ask to meet with me, and out of that can come an offer or a suggestion that we do another evaluation. So we've done an evaluation, we made a proposal, and the parents still feel like perhaps it's not meeting the need of their child, so we can ask for additional evaluations and more data. And in those cases, we've come to an agreement. So we've never been to hearing as of yet. We aren't always in agreement, but so far, this is, this is where we stand. So in 2016, you probably remember, Mr. Catalano, it was a great win for a special education director. When Department of Education came in for CPR, we had no findings for special education. We had some things we worked on in civil rights, but not in special education. Oh, my computer's going to sleep. Please excuse me. Oh, or that is. You have the notes, so shall I just go on? Is that okay?
That's fine. There it is. We're back.
Okay.
If you want to go back one slide. It's up to you.
If you don't mind, I'm going to talk about it without going back, because I can't actually see it here.
Go ahead.
I can only, it's projected up there. I have two screens in my office. That represents the second screen.
So you're fully compliant in all areas in school year '16, and then you had a mid-cycle review, yeah?
Yes, we're actually finding out about that on Friday, what this will entail. My understanding is the focus will be more on civil rights, but that's where we'll know more. There were some questions about, we perform a number of evaluations a year, so a third of our students actually get evaluated every year in the three-year reevaluation cycle. In addition, we do a lot of initial evaluations. Last year, and evaluations can come from teachers, from IST teams, from parents, et cetera. And this, last year, we had 27 evaluation requests from families, and out of the 27 evaluation requests, this is from ages 3 to 16, 12 of those students were, 12 of those students or young people were found eligible. And it was, and there was also some questions about, so what happens? What happens then? We, some of those students got, had 504, some of those students were already showing progress through general education.
What were the numbers one more time? I'm sorry.
What's that?
What were the numbers? You gave the numbers. I thought the numbers were on the sheet, but.
No. 27.
27 students were eligible?
No, 27 requests, and this is, and this is request by families only.
27 requests.
12 were found eligible.
Okay.
And there were no requests for, or denial of this finding. I think families felt comforted in the presentation and that they got the information that they wanted. This includes students who go to private schools outside of here. So anyone can make a request, and our responsibility is to perform the evaluation. The answer is not no, ever.
So for the evaluation?
Pardon me? For the evaluation.
Right.
Having a profile consistent with a disability and also needing specialized instruction, those are two more steps that have to be taken.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just going to keep going.
Just keep going. We can follow it.
We're good.
At the present time, or as of October 1st, we had 177 students with disabilities in Millis Public Schools. And I believe Millis does a wonderful job educating all students, but specifically in my area, students with disabilities. In the past year, the Department of Education has developed a process for us to be able to look at resource allocation related to special education, and this is called RADAR. It's on my slide. And it allows you like the DART process to be able to select districts that are similar to us, but this one actually also lets us choose districts that are, have similar wealth profiles. So the districts that have an asterisk in what you're looking at on that slide are ones that are both similar demographics, similar sized, as well as similar wealth profile. And what, what we were able to say was, you know, do we over-identify students? Do we not identify enough students? And according to this, we're nicely in the middle of the cohort of similar districts, and we're also under where the state. And so I was very pleased with that. I felt reassured. We're doing the appropriate thing. General education is working, and Millis, and so is special education. Again, talking about the least restrictive environment, that means sometimes that we're looking at developing programming. Programming should run in a continuum of service from general education all the way into substantially separate programming. When we look at creating substantially separate programming, a programming that's going to bring a child out of general education, we consider the child's needs, whether or not there's a cohort of students with similar needs. They need, folks need to have peers, whether we have the expertise here, and I'm not saying one and then the other, but these are all pieces we consider, and here in Millis, is the space available, or the appropriate kind of space available. In the past, we have developed a continuum of services by creating opportunities for substantially separate programming in each of the schools now, where that hadn't been in the past. That doesn't mean there's a lot of students in those programs, and we tend to use substantially separate classrooms as places for some students to just be in part of the day and some students to be in majority of the day. So it's a very flexible location. But I think one of the most wonderful things about Millis is the way students with disabilities from pre-K to 12 are incorporated into the life of the school in really meaningful ways. When we do send, when we do send students out of district, and this may come up later, but when we do send students out of district, it is, we have decided as a team, or I say "we," but the team has decided that the student has not made enough progress or growth or is not benefiting from the kinds of resources that we've tried here in the district. So we exhaust possibilities here before we consider placement elsewhere. When we look at least restrictive environment, all the kinds of settings we have for students with disabilities, the question is too, are we making sure we're being consistent with bringing students into general education, keeping them in the school? And the numbers you can see here for placement, also coming from RADAR, from full inclusion, partial inclusion, and substantially separate, we're squarely in the middle of all of those as well. Our teams are making good and strong decisions about students and their needs. I really expected one or two of these numbers to be a little askew, but this is, and I tried a couple of different ways of putting other districts in, and it still came out that way, so I'm really gratified that this is, this is where we are. Superintendent's here now, and we've spent some time poring over some of these, and I think we're confident. So what happens with out-of-district placements? There's a continuum with out-of-district placements. We use them when students would benefit from a highly specialized approach, apart from the expertise we have presently in school, and they need extensive, and/or need extensive supports to access education. Sometimes it's behavioral, sometimes it's real specialized instruction for a significant learning disability. There's a, there's a number of reasons. Out-of-district placements over the past few years have not varied a great deal, from 21 in 2014 up to a high of 23 in 2015, and we're at 20 now. One of the things that's changed over the last, and I don't recall, Millis is educating students at the 18 to 22 age more. So we have more students aged 18 to 22 than we have in the past. So this number, if we were looking at grade level or K to 12, students would look a little bit different. And we'll talk more about that in the next bit of time, not necessarily tonight, but about serving those students who are 18 to 22. So where are we in relation to the use of out-of-district supports for our students? Again, the percentage of students out of district, based on the entire population of students in Millis, is 1.1%. Our RADAR cohort, so those districts that are similar to us, go from .9 to 1.5. We're squarely in the middle again. And we're consistent with the state. I'm sorry, I'm just rolling along.
Nope. We will stop you if we need you.
Okay, thank you.
This is very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Where are we? As of October 1st, we have 15 special education teachers in the district. We have 13 related service providers and 22 paraprofessionals. Our staffing is determined by IEPs. And again, the IEP process, the creation of educational programs for students with disabilities, based on evaluation, progress monitoring, and we obviously need to staff to be able to do that. Once the IEP is signed, it's a legal and binding document, and we have to do what we say we're going to do. That's where compliance comes in. So in some sense, who we hire is not necessarily our choice. Perhaps how many we hire and how large the cohort of students these folks are responsible for, that's where we have some discernment. And that can depend on how many students with particular needs at any school, in any grade level, et cetera. But we'll find, once again, when we look at special education staffing, we're nicely in the middle of the cohort. We have raised, and I think the school committee has over time, supported the suggestions I've made and other folks have made to increase the number of special educators in the district, and it reflected here. We're above the state, which isn't a bad thing, and paraprofessionals per 100, we've also increased over time.
Can I, can I interrupt? Can I just ask if we feel like we're adequately staffed, or do we feel like we need more staff, or?
So at this time, I, in order to deliver special education, I feel like we're adequately staffed. That we're meeting the needs of students, they're making progress. We're looking, of course, if we'll have to make any adjustments as the new Clyde Brown opens, and, you know, the actual, I have to keep saying, nope, 5th grade isn't coming over, 4th grade is staying. So it's much, it's easier to project knowing it's the 4th graders that are staying as opposed to a group of students coming back. So really, we're anticipating kindergarten is what happens. We're keeping everybody, and we're getting kindergartners.
Right.
But yes, I do, and, but we're assessing it all the time. So it's often happens that in the summertime, we can have students move in with disabilities. This year, we had one student with an out-of-district placement move out and two move in. So a crystal ball doesn't work in special education.
Right.
There's always some contingencies. My good friend over here, and I'm often calling the superintendent up and saying, "Well, I'm kind of seeing, I'm seeing something happening here. I think we should plan for," and we do that, whether it's in the out-of-district budget or in a staffing situation. This is why paraprofessionals, sometimes we're adding them in the middle of the year based on needs, students moving in, or situations rising that we feel like we want to enhance. But I have to say, I don't believe there's anything I've ever come forward and said, "We need this," and it's not happened. And there are some things that we've come forward and said, "We think this is a good idea," and those things have happened as well. So I'm really comfortable in our staffing levels for special education. There are some more numbers, and I'll take you through them, but it is where we stand in relation to the cohort for paraprofessional, related service providers. Again, we're squarely in the middle, and special education teachers. So when I think, Robin, that I, yes, we're good, then I see these numbers, and I say, "No, this is, this is confirming to us that where we should be with special education." So how do we make sure that our staff can address the needs of a wide range of students? You'll see here that I've outlined some of the professional development efforts we've engaged in over the last few years, and they're broad. And some special education staff has participated, all the special education staff has participated in some of them, yet some of them are very specialized, like preschool folks did PECs and speech and language pathologists did that. That's a communication system for nonverbal students with disabilities, specifically autism. Apparently, we've also enhanced our offerings to paraprofessionals over the last few years, both online as well as live. We have, when I came here, we had three paraprofessionals that were considered ABAs or specially-trained paraprofessionals to work for, with students with autism. We now have nine who have finished that course. Not all of them are certified, but we do have nine with that expertise, and we're really proud of that. It enhances practice no matter where they are. So all of them don't work with students with disabilities, but it's about behavior, it's about support, it's about an approach, and so we're really happy with them and with that. The next questions we were asked was about social-emotional learning, and this has been a pretty exciting effort here in Mills. We don't know of anyone else who's doing a peer systems of support exactly in the way that we are for social-emotional learning. And just to remind you, what we're looking at is social skills, self-regulation, perspective-taking. These standards come from CASL. And the components that we're using, we do universal screening at each, in each school for all students three times a year. There's a team-based decision-making, the data is taken, and a team makes a decision on what this means in regard to intervention for students, what it means in regard to even establishment of Tier 1 supports or curriculum. We use small group as well as individual, and then highly specialized intervention. This is not special education, this is general education, as well as progress monitoring. Now, all of these pieces, since it was Now, all of these pieces, since it was, the pilot was last year, are still being expanded and capacity is still being built. Going, this year, our focus is on Tier 1 curriculum instruction at some, in some of the schools. Where are the gaps? What do our students seem to need? Tier 2 and Tier 3, how are we monitoring those students who are in small groups, that what we're doing is effective and that they are benefiting from it? Are we on the money, in other words? If we're taking them out of class and we're doing something special, I do want to make sure we're making an impact and building strength in tools. The other thing that we're doing in relation to sort of a top-tier intervention is looking at the viability of establishing bridge programming here at the high school for next year. Bridge program, simply put, is when students have health or emotionally-related needs, whether they're on an IEP or not, that has interrupted their ability to have consistent attendance at school or be able to benefit from education in ways we'd like to see. This program actually establishes a setting where students are in temporarily or for part of days, whether it's to catch up academically, to get some tools if it's, if it's an anxiety-related issue, and to be able to help folks feel stronger to go back into class, because it's hard to feel stronger to go full-time into class at home. So this is the bridge from home and situations like that into school. We had, we're engaged with an organization called Bright that has helped establish bridge programming in over 100 communities or 100 schools, I'm not sure which, in Massachusetts so far. And they've met with us once to talk about data gathering and decision-making and the kinds of protocols that have established for this. So we'll be back with more about a proposal for what that might cost or reallocation of resources that we already have in order to do this, if it's viable. Oh, the, the other thing is, and just to be clear, in order to deepen our tiered systems of support in all schools, I would say we could enhance the amount of counseling staff we have in each school.
How many do we have now? One?
At the elementary level, we have the, do you want to say assistant, assistant principal, who is .5? We have an additional, additional .2. We have a full-time counselor at the middle school with an additional .1. And we have two guidance counselors and a full-time school adjustment counselor at the high school, so. And I'll be, and I'll be talking more about that as the budget process goes forward with the principals as well. So we've already started thinking about what that might mean in regard to what we say in budget.
Okay.
And sort of, sort of little warning or so. So what will we be looking at going forward with this information about special education, with questions you've asked, with data that we have, with needs we see arising? We're going to continue to look at what are supports available for social-emotional learning, for strengthening those responses. We also, and I don't, you probably remember a couple of years ago, I said, "We have a cohort of young students on the autism spectrum, and we're going to continue to have to look at how we're providing supports for them." And we're at another place where it's like, "Oh, we might have to reallocate or redo something still at the elementary level in order to enhance supports." Bridge program, like I just mentioned, and then further into the distance, because one of the things I can do is look at the students we have here and make some assumptions that they'll still be here in a year or two, and what would that mean for programming? We're going to start talking about the viability of creating 18 to 22 programming in school year 21. So we would have to really, it's, and that's a very comprehensive thing, so there's a lot, there's a lot to consider when we take that on, so we'll be back to you with that as well.
Would that be less people going out of district, more people staying in?
Right, so right now, we have three students who are out of district at that age group. And because it is comprehensive, so you're talking about travel, training, going to colleges, having work experiences, it really takes a broad understanding. What we're doing now is talking to other communities with similar needs, perhaps maybe some partnering, we could do something like that. But we also know in 2021, we'll have more like five or six students of that age. So we start having cohort where they have peers, where we have the ability to put in enough resources to make something comprehensive.
So would that, do we have the space? Do we have the physical space?
Well, I actually did talk, I did talk to Mr. Malaney before I started the conversation, and he said, "Yes." He said, "Yes," but, but the other thing is if we're able to partner with someone else, they may have better space or have an additional space, or we can use two spaces, which for students at that age, if what, if our, our role is to help them have more, more strong lives when they lead us, leave us, then having two locations and many opportunities is not a bad idea either.
Right. So you said this would be 21, school year 21, 22?
Yes, yes.
So the sooner we can get some kind of budget projections, even if they're ballpark figures, we shouldn't wait until
Yes, sir.
Next year, we should start to think about this, because we're trying to be strategic and try to do some planning, because we can have lists of current, current state, ideal state, preferred state.
Exactly.
And I would put that in kind of the preferred state for now, that is where we think we need to be, or the ideal state in two years.
The positive part about that is the resources that we're using to sending them out actually stay here.
No, I, yes.
Right, it isn't necessarily as, but, but it would be other things, it would be transportation, it would be other things that we normally don't.
So the sooner we can start the budget projections, right?
Yes, yes.
Based on your assumptions that it could be six, right?
Yes.
Whatever that is, that, that would be helpful.
Yes, yes, super. That's it?
So you have the easy part. So first of all, I'd like to say, thank you for putting this all together, and this was a very comprehensive presentation. You've always been very helpful when you present. I've been on the committee for 10 years, this is the, probably the best, quite honestly, it's probably the first real, specific presentation about special education, especially with some of the numbers. The numbers are helpful, the numbers are a good check.
Data's a fantastic tool.
Yeah, so that's, that's been, this is really helpful to see where we are at, and we're right where we need to be from what it appears. That's from my number standpoint, you would know better from kind of the technical standpoint, but it looks, we're right where we need to be. We're not the worst, we're not the best, we're, we're, we're average.
Right, we're not overspending, we're not over-identifying, we're not over-placing.
So the one thing, the one thing you, you brought up, last year, there were 27 requests and 12 eligible.
Yes.
So I, I don't, that's probably 45%, right? And I don't know, is there, is there a way to look at, is that 45% just less than half? Is that a normal number, or does that fluctuate? You can't, you can't tell.
You could have, you could have a year where it'd be 27 out of 27.
Okay.
You could have a year be zero out of 27.
Because anyone can ask it at any time, so we have students at Ursuline Academy on the honor roll whose parents ask for an evaluation for disability in IEP.
And they left the district to go to Ursuline?
I'm just, I'm just saying, these things can, yes, yes. For example.
I was saying, I hope that's not an out-of-district placement, that's expensive.
No, no, no. That's another out-of-district placement, but, but what I'm saying is that student's entitled to an evaluation in public.
So there's no, there's no way to, there's no number that we'd be looking at?
No.
Okay, all right.
How many people that are denied appeal to DESI?
Well, we have no mediation and no
None? Just, just the one before you came in?
The only appeal process are those two things.
Are there districts that have higher numbers? I mean, are there people that are going out of districts all the time and going to DESI all the time or having a lot of mediation?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and I think that speaks to the, to how solid your program is. Because basically, if you're running a really sound program, you simply don't have mediations, you don't have appeals of IEP meetings, you, you just don't have it, and you're not having it here. I've been in districts where, in fact, when I originally went to Drake it years ago, that was one of the things we had to bring into line, because every time we turned around, we were at some meeting at DESI over an IEP
They're going downtown all the time.
Or over a reevaluation or something. I mean, it just, it was making our head spin.
Do, do the, do we make, make it clear to the, and I'm just asking, of what that process is? Do they know the process?
Appeal.
Yeah, so when they start that IEP, do you walk through like, here's the, here's the process if you don't agree, that type of thing, so they are aware?
So, yes, so a couple of things happen. Annually, we do, we're, oh, and one of the things I didn't mention, we have a wonderful CPAC right now, and that was something that wasn't always in play. It's positive, it's active, and it's
We've invited them here and they haven't shown up.
Not this last year, right?
No, we haven't had them
They're coming
They did the previous year.
Yeah, one time, but they're
They're coming in June and there was some illness, I believe, or so. But they'll be glad, yeah, they'll be glad to present, and I think
I just want them, I want them to know that they're welcome to come and present. It's, by law, we have to
Yes.
We have to invite them, whether they show up, that's up to them.
Right, I think they'd really like to, they're doing some wonderful things, I'd like to get on there. But back to the question about what do we do?
Yep.
So one of the things that we do, do annually is we do a Parents' Rights presentation, where we talk specifically and at length about what the rights, what are the procedures that I just quickly outlined to you. The other thing that happens is that annually and at team meetings, parents receive something called a Notice of procedural safeguards, and it outlines all of this, first of all, what they can expect as far as a team process, as well as what the due process rights are for mediation or for hearing.
Perfect.
And, yes, and, and the other thing is that we do tell, that our team chairs do tell parents, if you don't agree, please, if there's something you don't agree with, please let me know first, right? And we, we can reconvene if we have to, but you also have, you also have a due process right as well. So I think it kind of speaks to the culture that's set up in Milis, that parents will generally call the team chair and say, "I think there's a typo, I think something was forgotten, something seems right." That being said, although I agree with Mr. Wigan, that we have a program that's substantial, that's supportive, the culture's strong, but sometimes you just don't agree. Sometimes folks think students need a certain thing, and we think our data says students need another thing. There's a number of circumstances, so that may be here next year and say, "Well, we're in hearing, we've been hearing." There are circumstances that really don't, I don't want to say have to do with the kinds of service that folks are providing.
So it's fair to say that we have a strong program?
Yes, sir.
That we're adequately staffed at this time, and that could change?
I think we're well-staffed, yes.
And that could fluctuate depending on the population, people moving into town?
Yes.
The cost, and that we're looking to see if it's feasible to keep people in district to support them?
Yes.
Which may pay for itself, because I've signed a lot of bills with staggering out-of-district costs. And I don't know if that's, if those, that, that's the population, if there's tiers of out-of-district supports, but
Oh, I did, so there is, there was a question about what is the average tuition?
Yes.
And so we, we broke it, yeah.
That was mine.
Right, it is broken down in one of those slides.
Oh, okay, so
Average tuition for collaboratives, an average for a public day school, and an average for
I don't think it made this presentation, but if it's somewhere, there's a few other memos, we could take a look at it, and if you, if we don't have
We'll certainly get it to you if somebody didn't make this, but I thought it was in here.
Yeah, let's see it.
That's our turn.
Did you see it? I didn't see it.
It's not in the presentation.
Maybe in one of the memos.
I think you're right that that slide isn't, isn't here.
No, that's fine, so we, just, just
But we've seen the slide, I know we made it.
Send it to us.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, absolutely. The, I would say the numbers on average, when I think of an out-of-district placement, I think somewhere around $60,000 to $70,000.
A year.
A year. And collaboratives tend to be around 60, private day schools or public day schools, private day schools tend to be more around 80 to 100, and
I've seen a lot of bills, five, six grand a month.
Yeah, yes.
Some seven grand a month.
Yes, yes.
So that's right, that's exactly, that plays into your figures right there, 60 to 70 grand or 80 grand.
Right, so then we gain those resources back, and in addition, the costs related to transportation becomes different too. So that's not always utilized.
We're not doing this for cost savings.
No.
We're doing
But it's always least restrictive, right? That principle of least restrictive environment, closer to your neighborhood school, closer to your peers. So we're, that's consistent with that approach as well.
Well, if it's the right thing for the student, it's the right thing for the family, and it's the right thing for the district, and we can save money and expand our program tiers of support and other places. We're not going to give the money back, right? We're going to, we're going to spend that money somewhere else. I think that's fine, I just want to make sure that, that there's never any pressure from us to say, "We need to reduce our budget." I know the budget fluctuates depending on the amount of students on IEPs, but I, I've stated in, in, and the superintendent has heard this, we had, several years ago, we let off, we, we, we let people go, we let aides go, and then we're coming back four months later to hire people, and I'm just very concerned about reducing staffing because we've seen a dip, right? And so there's enough, in my opinion, there's probably a lot of work to be done and to support others that should probably not be moving people around. But if this is the right thing for the district and the right thing for the students, you have support here on the committee.
Thank you, thank you, Will. It's certainly my best, my best estimate of our needs at this time. But I'd be glad to come back to you with more information regarding these initiatives and if, if something looks different.
I think it would be helpful, but feeding the budget piece to Terry is, would be really, really helpful, because that's what this, this whole question and answer is about budget and policy. Probably less about policy right now, more about budget, is we want to try to be strategic and not just look one year ahead, but start to look at a three-to-five-year plan and plan accordingly.
And we do, we've done the same, which is why we've come to you and say, "Can I have another person? Here's what we'd like to develop." So I think, I think I feel nothing but supported by the school committee and have, am very grateful.
This is, once again, an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you, it was very comprehensive.
Thanks very much.
So can you help us with some of the money?
It's about to go downhill.
Oh, no.
No, I, I highly doubt that, Mr. Wigan. Tell us what we need to know.
Well, all right, I guess I, I need to start, of course, you saw my memo, and I do like these exercises, because I started this and I thought, "Oh, this would be really simple." You know, I'll just be able to pull the histories and no worries. And I think the big picture, I, I want to start with, I want to start with a positive piece of the big picture. I think in a sense of the big vision of these numbers, I think the financial, big-picture trends are accurate. I think that if you were to plot this graphically, and I was going to do it, and for a variety of reasons, which I'll explain momentarily, I did not do it. I, I think they track, okay? The problem, as they say, the devil is in the details here, and there's a couple of things that I outlined, is, as I was going through this, the first thing that became very apparent to me is that when the chart of accounts was created, and I have no idea who did it and I don't really care, doesn't matter, is there's a piece of the chart of accounts that, as I explained, is a, sometimes it's called a program code, sometimes it's called a project code, sort of the very end of the code, and it's used to identify, in this particular case, special education. And the idea is, is that way you could just type in that, in our case, in RDA's case, it's a three-digit number, sometimes it's a five-digit number, doesn't really matter, and bang, all of those accounts will come forward. The problem became very apparent that some of the things that had the special ed project code on it weren't special ed accounts. And some items that were clearly special ed expenses didn't have that project code. So that became the first piece of detective work I needed to do as I was pulling together these numbers. I think I got most of it, but actually, earlier today, so Anna and I were talking, and there's a line in there, says kindergarten teachers, it's coded as a special ed line, we're not, I, I don't, it, it goes back historically, I don't know why there would be a kindergarten teacher line coded to special education, so I'm going to
Did at one point, we fund them through sped funding?
Well, I, I don't know, at, at one point in time, maybe there was a special ed teacher assigned to kindergarten, though that would be a first for me.
At one point in time, we did have an inclusion classroom at every single grade level that had responsibility for IEPs, so it could be left over from there.
That may have been what it was, so it may be a legitimate expense. But those are the types of things that, you know, give me pause a little bit, because it's an unusual coding, or, and, and again, sometimes it may be the description itself, which is confusing. So that was one thing. Then I, and I have to tell you, my staff has the patience of Job, because they were listening to me when I would come in with these things that would pop up as I was going through this. So you guys all understand what an encumbrance is, and you understand at the end of the year, basically, those encumbrances go away, because basically, we spent the budget. It's that simple. An encumbrance becomes a purchase, you guys pay a bill, and the encumbrance
So we put a, but, we put the budget up.
Yeah.
And we encumbered this money, we encumbered $100,000
Right.
To fund books, whatever, computers.
Right.
And then at the end of the year And then at the end of the year.
You paid those bills.
If we spend, if we pay, if we only spent ninety-five, we, we spent ninety, unencumbered five thousand dollars.
Right, exactly. Perfect, perfect description.
And then it becomes end of the year savings.
And then it becomes end of the year savings, and, yeah, exactly. So, right now, for example, and for 2018, we're right now going through whatever unencumbered fund, unencumbered numbers we have, and we'll close those out, because basically, there shouldn't be any, because we're getting ready to do the audit. Well, FY16 is long since gone. There shouldn't be any encumbrances.
Uh-uh.
And yet, we found some. We found some in fifteen, and we found some in seventeen. They just shouldn't exist. So I had no way of telling whether those were actually expenditures.
How do we close out the year with encumbrance?
Well, I, that's a good question. Shouldn't be able to be done. But again, that was a question that was raised as I was going through this. And then probably the one that was the most puzzling of all was, so you get a, generate a report, in fact, you've seen the report, it's part of your expenditure report you get. You have month-to-date expenditures, and then you have year-to-date expenditures. And so, month-to-date expenditures feed into year-to-date expenditures, pretty straightforward, I think everybody understands that. So if you have five thousand dollars in month-to-date expenditures, you would expect to see at least five thousand dollars in year-to-date expenditures, right? Makes sense?
Yes.
So if you see five thousand dollars in month-to-date expenditures and you see zero in year-to-date expenditures, it probably would raise some questions in somebody like me, who's just a country accountant. And again, I just had to raise questions in my mind, there's an expenditure recorded in that particular prior fiscal year in a month-to-date, but not in a year-to-date, so I chose not to count those numbers. Whether or not they truly exist would require considerably more research, and I just didn't have the time to do that for you. But again, I think overall, if you look at the sheets that you were given, you know, big picture, I think you get an idea of the trending in some of the areas. And again, just to review, and it would help if I looked at mine right side up, what you have is you have the FUN10, which is the operating budget, which is obviously where the bulk of the money comes from. But there are several other areas that contribute to funding of special education. There are revolving funds, and principally in the revolving funds, there are, I have to count them up, season three or four, there is preschool revolving, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, I think, when we talk about early childhood. There is transportation. There is a little bit in choice. And I think those are the three primary revolving funds.
So you said, I'm sorry, you said, transportation, choice.
And preschool.
School.
Okay. Be the three primary revolving funds. The, the big grant I think that everybody is certainly aware of is the IDEA grant, and that I gave its own column. There are a couple of smaller grants that I put under other grants and lumped them together. One is the Special Education Improvement Grant. The other, again, which is somewhat related to early childhood, is the Early Childhood Grant. I want to say there's one other.
There were.
There were.
No longer.
No longer, that's why I'm thinking of it.
Were no longer eligible for those grants.
I know, I know there was some older, yeah, that's why, they don't pop up this year or last year, but I think maybe back in 2015, there was a couple of, of older grants. And then, of course, there's Circuit Breaker. And Circuit Breaker, just to remind everybody, is what will happen, is that we will have expenses qualify for Circuit Breaker this year, we file for it, and the money is basically always a year in arrears, and we spend it in that year. And under state law, you're required to spend that money in its entirety in that year. You can't carry over Circuit Breaker. So if we ever look like we're not going to spend all of Circuit Breaker, we obviously make some adjustments to make sure we do spend Circuit Breaker, rather than, for example, spending it out of FUN10.
So just to clarify, the Circuit Breaker comes in, for example, this year, we're not required to spend that amount this year.
Right.
So, but the amount we receive this year is what we are required to spend next year.
Right.
So it's, but this year's Circuit Breaker, the funds we're receiving are based on last year's application and the extraordinary expenses that are over three times foundation, et cetera. It's a complicated formula. So it's really kind of a three-year process.
Yeah.
We apply, we re, one fiscal year, receive the funds in the next fiscal year, and then must spend them by the end of the following fiscal year.
And, and in recent years, Circuit Breaker has come closer to being fully funded, but it has not been fully funded for as long as I can remember.
Meaning you're given all of the money that we've applied for.
I mean, nobody has. In other words, what will happen is they will take all of those applications that Nancy just described, and then they will say, okay, this is the spot of money we have, and basically, let's say all of those mean that if they distribute them equally, everybody gets sixty-five percent.
Got it, yep.
So I think this year, it was seventy-three.
I think last year was seventy-two.
Seventy, last year was seventy-two, I think this year was seventy-three. And I know one of the things the legislature is allegedly going to debate this spring is, you know, how to get to fully funding Circuit Breaker. I just thought we were allegedly.
Terry, offhand, do you know, you may know this, do you know what the FY19 total operating budget is? What's the FUN10? Is it fifteen, not the SPED, just the?
The overall, you mean comprehensively, everything?
The total budget. I, I have a book somewhere.
We have a bunch of books.
Just like, just on the red, white and blue.
FUN10 is fifteen, something seventy-eight, I don't know what that number is.
Fifteen-eight, right? You want to just say fifteen-eight?
Fifteen-eight, I think fifteen-eight.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's fifteen.
Except that red, white and blue sheet probably doesn't have the four hundred and twenty-five that we had to redo.
It's one six billion six hundred and thirty-nine.
No.
But we had to reduce four twenty-five and then lost a grant, well, grant is.
I'm just making, I'm doing a very high-level ballpark. So, I'll say fifteen-four, just to, just to be safe.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, three-point-six divided by fifteen-point-four, as we said, so it's twenty, twenty-four percent if we're just looking at FUN10.
If you're just looking at FUN10.
Then if we add it in, so if we want, so that's twenty-four percent. And then if you added in the other, I don't see them as offsetting revenues if they're coming in from the revolving, so.
Well, see that, yeah, in.
Five-point-two. So it's five-point-two divided by fifteen-point-four. So we're talking thirty-five percent. So I, I looked at four-point, four-point-four plus eight-hundred thousand, which is five-point-two million.
Yeah.
That's revolving and.
I went, I went at this a little different.
Okay.
Let me, let me tell you how I went at this. And I see where you're going, and of course, this is always, you can always calculate these different ways, is what I did is I looked at, remember how we were talking about a gross budgeting model?
Yep.
So I did exactly that, as I said, okay, if I total up all of the expenditures of the district, not just special ed, all the revolving funds, all the, you know, everything, everything we spend is a district, okay?
That's right, I didn't add, I didn't add the other revolving.
Right.
But we could still go with the FUN10, it's still twenty-four percent.
It's still twenty-four, absolutely legitimate, a FUN10, but if you take all of that, everything we spend on schools.
Okay.
So, for example, everything we spend on schools, then this year, we're currently tracking at twenty-one-point-three-eight percent. Now, one of the things I noted about that is I need to go back in again, I was so focused on the fact that these accounts didn't match up, I didn't really go back in and look. I think there's some grant budgets that haven't been entered, because if I look at that comprehensive budget, it's actually lower than last year, and I don't think that's quite right, even though we did have grants go down and some other things.
The number's not right.
Yeah, the number's not right. So, so it should be higher. So I think that twenty-one-point-three-eight is a little high.
So you're, it's a fair point that I didn't, I didn't include both. But just from a FUN10 standpoint, it's twenty-one percent.
Twenty-four percent, yeah.
Twenty-four percent, that's, that's, that's a lot.
It is a lot.
The population is not twenty-four percent, what was it, you probably would know this, instead of me going digging in.
Twelve, twelve.
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent of our population.
And this is not a negative thing, this is just, we're talking numbers here. Twelve percent of the student population is responsible for twenty-five percent of the expenditures. Just on FUN10 alone, not the other.
And I haven't run the DART numbers, or, or the radar numbers, but of course, one of the districts I'm fairly well aware of, because I worked there for a number of years, I would tell you that, knowing that, knowing that district, okay, albeit several years ago, that to say that the special ed costs were easily, you know, easily, okay, two and three times the cost of, of what the regular instruction, if you will, I'm sure that if I were to go back there and figure those budgets, I probably was at, in fact, I had a fairly substantial out-of-district placement at the time. I'm betting I was at least twenty, twenty-three, if not twenty-five percent.
So right where we are.
In Georgetown, yeah, I, I am sure. Because, and that's the thing that, that's the thing that happens. And then that's why I say, one of the things that happens with special ed budgets is you will see swings. And they typically are swings that get determined, not so much by your in-district programming as much as it is what happens with your out-of-district placement.
But just looking, just very quickly, looking at your five-year spread here.
Yeah.
There's some swings, but there's a sweet spot there, we.
Oh, yeah, there is a sweet spot.
You, you, so.
Right around tonight.
I get it, that it does fluctuate, but you can see.
Yeah.
What it's going to be. It's not, it's not impossible. It's, the asterisk is, two families move in, could shoot it up.
Yeah.
Or, two families move out.
Yeah.
And it goes down.
Oh, no, absolutely.
So what do we need to know, other than you having to go work on what you found, what do we need to know from a budget standpoint around this cost center?
Well, I think you've identified a couple of things. One, I think, and so Ann and I already talked about it, is in a sense, there's some things that obviously we need to address in looking forward long range, instead of projecting our budget forwards, because there are needs that are going to be coming up. So we need to start projecting that, so you folks can see what's going to happen, not just next year, but two and three years down the road. Because special education, like any budget center, is best served when you can project long-term what your budget's going to, going to look like, so you can plan properly. I think that's one thing. I think, in the sense of, we've talked about, you know, prospectively, obviously, cleaning up this process so that we can properly define things.
Yep.
Moving forward, and the FY20 budget and beyond, obviously, is a significant thing, not just for my sanity, but, but truthfully, so that we have clarity on what truly is a special ed cost, and how to track it and follow it accurately and completely, and then obviously, what things really do belong in, in other cost centers. So I think that's an important part of the process.
So could I just stop you there for one second? So one thing that we haven't talked about is we've started these kind of question and answers with the different, you're the second one up. As we, we haven't really figured out what the FY20 product looks like, right? We have an idea, we have pretty good, substantially good budget book. One thing I think we need to do is, we really need to highlight this cost and the expense. I, I think we, we, we talk about the number, but I think showing some of the, the actual heavy lift that we have to do around this, and how things can fluctuate, I think would be helpful for the district. And I'm not saying we have to do a ten-page supplement, but I think we need to do a good job of highlighting the impact, this, and Peter Germain, who's no longer the chair of the FinCom, but he likes to talk about the unfunded mandate, right? I mean, the mandate's funded to a certain degree, but it's not completely funded, so it's technically an unfunded mandate, that I think we need to explain that there's twenty-one, twenty-four percent of our budget, just the straight operating budget, goes to this small twelve percent of the population. That needs to be served by law and by the right thing to do, so.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. And if I may briefly, while I'm on camera, to the small number of people who are watching, I will get on my soapbox, which I've been on for, oh, I don't know, thirty-odd years.
Okay.
Since nineteen-seventy-six, when the law first passed, okay, in that the federal government funds nine percent of a law that they said they would fund forty-eight percent of.
Forty-eight wasn't enough either.
So, you know, we're, it, it is, it is one, you talk about an unfunded mandate, okay?
Right.
This started back when the federal law was first passed, and unfortunately, you know, state governments have been thrust with, with doing more than their share, and of course, ultimately, it ends up being local governments, like Milis, like every school district in the country, end up bearing the burden. So, thank you for.
Yeah, what I, what I also want to be careful is that we're not, we're not treating students as numbers, or treating this just as a budgetary, but that is our job, right?
Yes.
Our job is not to educate, our job here in the committee is to look at things from a budget and policy standpoint. So, I'm not being.
No, I think, I.
Analytical about this, but we are having a budget conversation.
And I think it's important to reiterate, or I'll, I'll restate maybe what, what you stated earlier, Mr. Chairman, is that the important thing here is what's best for kids. And this committee has always stood for what's best for kids in this district, and I think this is just one more example of it, and, you know, we're going to do what we need to do. But we also have a budget and a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens, so we have to keep track of these things.
So one last thing, and I, just prior to this meeting, I had a meeting with a representative from the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the FinCom. We did tribe board meetings last year, was it last year? Yes, last year, December into January of, in February of last year. We're going to start the process again, and we want to, we were trying to figure out what we're going to do. We're going to get to the FY20 budget, right? But then the, the bigger piece is, we want to be more strategic as a town. I think we do a good job here being strategic. I think overall, the town, meaning the municipal side, and then the bigger picture town, I think we need to do a better job. So, this plays right in to the issue around, can we think strategic? Because two years from now, there's a policy shift, right? Whether, whether we do it or not, but there's a discussion on apologies. This is something that we'd bring up at a tribe board meeting, saying, this is the, we're going to, it's going to have to come out in the wash, but there's going to be a cost, but this is what we're doing. So, the, as we go through these cost center evaluations, we have to think the, the short-term strategic, kind of what it looks like, the impact, and then the medium, three-to-five-year impact, because that's what I think they want to do. And I support the exercise. I think, quite honestly, the school and the work that we've done around budgeting, I think we're in a better position to do that. I think there's some work to be done. I think, quite candidly, the town said that they needed to work on this, this was something that they needed. But I, we're, we're supportive of that. And so, tribe board meetings will, will be commencing in January, so as we go through, this is less about the SPED, but more about, as you go through and you start to identify, the more strategic and kind of short-term and long-term, the better it will be, because we can feed that into the bigger picture. And a bit, the Capitol Planning Committee will be invited to the meetings, and really, the members from the, each of the boards will be kind of the, the main, but, so we're gonna really look at this in a strategic way, so, that was just prior to this meeting. But thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you very much.
This is very helpful. So now we're on the superintendents, so we're not doing the standard base, so we have phone update and budget update.
So, Mr. Wiggin can stay and-
Please do.
Why don't you go ahead and start with the, either one, the phone update first, if you'd like?
Okay, so, I, I gave you a, a memo that kind of outlined a little bit of the history of how we got to a new phone system, and, and without kind of going back through all of it, of course, I think the big thing is, first off, we wanna thank the voters for approving the warrant article, that gave us hundred thousand dollars for a new phone and intercom system for this building, 'cause that is going to be a huge move forward, both for communications in this building, but for safety and security, and so we're very thankful for that. I also wanna say, she's not here tonight, she will be coming to a future meeting, but we really wanna give a lot of thanks to Diane Germain, who's worked very hard on this, and basically, what kind of started back around the time when we were also working on the phones for this building, is with the building project, we were talking about phones, and it was a technology meeting, and Jennifer Starr and myself, and the Germaines and I were meeting with the, the builders, and we all of a sudden found out that this phone system had not only been let for submittal, but had submittal been received, and none of us knew anything about the phone system.
What, what does that mean, I'm sorry?
What it means is, is submittal is essentially like a bid-
Okay.
-that a subcontractor will give to one of their subs, and in this case, the phone system was part of the base bid for the building project.
Okay.
But typically speaking, there's some communication with the owner about, well, what do you want for a phone system, what do you want for computers, you know, these things don't just happen in a vacuum, in this particular case, there seemed to be a lack of communication with the owner, I mean, John Engler didn't know anything about it, we didn't know anything about it, of course, I was new, but, I mean, there were other people who were, were here, and so, we had an extensive conversation, and it was agreed that we could take two weeks, 'cause Wayne was rather frustrated as well, Wayne Cloco, the head of the Building Committee, that there had been no communication, and so, I think the following Monday, we had a meeting, I think Nancy was present, John was present, Diane was present, I was there, Jen was there-
Jen Starr, yeah.
And we took two weeks to vet phone systems, and the two systems we primarily vetted were the system that had been submitted, and we spoke with that vendor, and also the system that the town was using, and, and just so folks understand, the, the system the town is currently using with two of its buildings, the police and fire, is a voice-over IP that is cloud-based, the system that had been submitted for Clyde Brown was a voice-over IP, but it was a different company, and it was, if you will, server-based, I guess would be the best way I would describe it, it was based on a, a box that's housed in the system. And I think this committee knows that one of my concerns is the system we got, and I really didn't care whether it was cloud-based or it was based in-house, but it had to be what I call a unified system, and what that means is that it's not just a voice-over IP, but it unifies with cellphones at a minimum, and conceivably tablets and other devices as well, but cellphones at a minimum, so that if a building principal, for example, is out in the building, not in his office, and there's a reason for that principal to initiate an alert, that they can do it right from their cellphone, they don't need to go back to the office, they don't need to go to a room to grab a phone-
Right.
-they can do it right from where they are, that, that, that in fact, it is, because it's internet-based, if they were in California, they could do it from California, I mean, that's the way it works, that was a primary concern of mine with any system that we were going to put in for both schools. So, in talking with the town's vendor, that was clearly not only something they could do, it's something they actually have installed in some of the tragic situations of shootings around the country, that we would all know of, unfortunately, after the fact. So, they had a very good system, we were very pleased with their system, and theirs was cloud-based, we did find out that the system that had been originally spec'd for the building project also had a system that they were not allowed to submit originally, which gave us an alternative to look into, but when we finally got down to really all the sorting out, we really felt that doing something where the entire community, municipal buildings and the school were on one system, okay, one phone company, so to speak, made a whole lot of sense, and as it turned out, would also have advantages for the Veterans Memorial Building, because they would be able to kind of piggyback on our purchase and upgrade their phones, which I think they've had for-
Fifteen?
Fifteen years, sixteen years, something like that, and it's also an old conventional PBX system like ours. So, we then were in a situation where a special offer was made to us, which also made the deal more attractive, so we thought, quite, we went through the process of getting an inventory of what we felt we needed in both buildings, we submitted all that information for contract information, we thought things were going very smoothly, and, and then quite frankly, the vendor came back to us with some different information, and yesterday, Nancy, myself, Wayne, and Diane met with the vendor-
And Mike Kaczynski.
And Mike Kaczynski, I'm sorry, I apologize, Mike, we were very clear on our position, I think the vendor is very clear what our position is, and what the vendor needs to do, and I think Friday is basically the deadline that they, the vendor has basically self-imposed to say they'll come back to us with revised pricing. Now, in a sense of the system itself, I described this as sort of, I, I started saying it's comparing apples to oranges, and I would, I would, I would, then said it's more like comparing apples to watermelons.
Both delicious fruits.
Both delicious fruits, but, but for example, we're talking about going, and I'll use this building as an example, 'cause the new building's obviously a new install, but you're talking about a situation where you would have a phone in every room, you would have a phone in core areas, in some cases, that phone, like a phone in a core area probably is not gonna have any voicemail attached to it, for example, it's probably gonna be a pretty basic phone, but phone in a teacher's classroom will have a voicemail attached to it, it will have dialing capability, it will not necessarily be a public phone, in the sense of, we won't necessarily publish a number, and we'll be able to do, because of the technology, we can, for example, limit, so that, for example, that phone can't be called during class and those types of things, I mean, it's obviously new technology, so you can do lots of different things, the phones are all digital, when you hear these phones, you never need a conference phone again, 'cause you can have a phone right here, and then somebody back by the first stack of books could hear me very clearly if I was talking through that phone, it's very clear, there's conferencing capability on all the phones, they're, they're very sophisticated, but there's a certain number of phones that will be what I call the unified communications, administrators, members of what we define as safety teams, and those are the phones I talk about where you'll, can answer on your phone, you can answer on your computer, you can answer on your tablet, you can answer on your cellphone, and that, it'll just move seamlessly, and that's, was very, very key to us, because that's a huge security feature, because, and, and by the way, even if you don't have that feature, if you're a teacher in a classroom, you will also be able to institute a, an alert, if, if you're a teacher in a classroom and you see something that's happening, and you need to institute an alert, you'll be able to do that, there are no more limitations to, gotta come from the office.
Right.
This is a system that is designed for not just communications enhancements, but security.
And that's, and that's what you've asked the vendor to give you a price on?
Yes, and he has given us a price.
So what's Plan B if vendor, if, so this vendor comes back and says, I can't meet your-
We actually have two, we have actually two other vendors that-
That will give us a system comparable to what you just talked about?
One is a, one is another national vendor, which Diane's more familiar with than I am, but I am familiar with, that we believe we can get a, a similar, if not identical system, and the other is the vendor that was going to, I mentioned that the vendor who originally had the bid to install the phones originally with the Clyde Brown project, there was a system that he was not allowed to bid, we did not explore why he was not allowed to bid it, but-
Oh, whatever, but they have, they have a system comparable to-
Right, it's again, it's a unified communication system, and-
So we have three options, so if this, if this vendor does, this is our preferred vendor, I would assume?
Right.
And if that doesn't work out, we have option B.
We have options.
That will give us something comparable.
And, and to be perfectly honest, there's probably even, even a couple of other options beyond that, but we know of at least two more options that we have and can exert, and can execute quickly.
And all options give us the unified system with the town?
That's, yes, that's the, that's the plan.
While we are still refining the numbers, I wanna make it clear that this will cost you more money than you're used to.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have numbers, I don't have what I'm used to, because I don't know what the cost is.
Okay, right now, right now, you're paying approximately sixteen thousand dollars a year for a PBX system.
Okay.
For the entire district.
For the entire district.
Okay, for a phone system.
For a phone system.
What are the thoughts on what this thing could look like per month?
Well, I'd rather give you an annual cost.
However you wanna give me the number.
And I, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be vague, okay, deliberately, because I'm negotiating, but I'm going to say that that number would probably double.
Per?
Year.
Per year?
Per year.
Okay.
So sixteen a month, times ten is a hundred and sixty, plus thirty-two.
No, no, sixteen was for the year.
Sixteen a year, I'm sorry, so we could be going to thirty-two a year?
Possibly.
Potential, I understand that word, but you're also writing a memo saying it's gonna cost more money, so-
Yeah.
-I don't wanna interfere your negotiations, but I have to ask the question.
Right, no, and I actually believe it will probably be less.
Okay, that's fine.
So what, what was, so there was a phone system that was part of the building project?
Yeah.
What was that gonna cost us?
That was probably gonna be comparable.
Comparables are existing.
In fact, actually, it was probably gonna be a little bit more.
Of what?
To the sixteen or the thirty-two?
Than the thirty-two.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because with that system, you not only had the, the phone piece, but you had the server piece.
So the hundred grand is still gonna pay for the system, whatever we get?
Oh, easily.
So that cost is fine.
And, and the intercom.
The only real change-
Yeah.
Is the, the, the annual cost, the annualized cost.
Right.
Sixteen to thirty-two, we'll be able to figure that out.
No, I, again, and that's why I say, I, I had actually estimated the cost, it would be a little bit higher than that-
Okay.
And, and, and I was pretty comfortable we could figure it out, and again, bear in mind, you're gonna have phones where you didn't have phones before, you're gonna have usability that you did not have before, as I say, it's a multi-generational jump, so, as far as communication, so, yeah, I, I did not feel that that was gonna be something that could not be handled.
I think that can be, so Mike, what do we need to know about this, is this just an update, is there any other concerns or implications for us?
The only other concern, and it's not a concern right now, but it may be a concern at your next meeting, depending on how negotiations go, you may need to empower either Nancy or myself to sign a contract in your absence over the holiday break, because December thirty-first is the deadline for this deal, and if for some reason, we're still negotiating, but we still feel that we wanna be negotiating with this particular company, we may need to have you empower one of us to be able to do that.
How many people have to sign?
It would be somebody from the school and somebody from the town.
I'm around.
I'm around, we're fine.
Okay.
We'll be, we'll be fine, I'm around.
And typically, yeah, I mean, we can talk about the parameters, et cetera, typically, the superintendent signs the contract, but after school committee approval.
Yeah, so we just, we just need to have, I guess maybe that's what I'm really saying, is you'd sort of, however we do it, you know what I'm saying, we need to-
We'll be around.
We need to have that process.
That will not be, that will not be an issue.
Okay.
And hopefully, we'll have the parameters prior to-
Yeah, I, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, because I think, again, we're either gonna fish or cut bait this Friday, in a likelihood, which means we'll be bringing something to you on the, what is it, the eighteenth?
Eighteenth, yeah.
The eighteenth, so, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, and quite frankly, if this company is not gonna be the company, then we're gonna be still negotiating with the company anyways.
And on the eighteenth, we don't need anyone, you, you can come and present, you and the superintendent, we don't need outside presenters, we have a lot going on on the eighteenth.
Okay, that's fine. And I think budget was the other thing?
So the other, two other purchases, the two used buses, did you all read that?
We did, we took care of that.
They were very efficient, they, they didn't even ask me to come up.
Thank you, thank you, then just the modular classroom-
Oh, the modular classroom.
Just an update.
Yeah, I, so I had, I've been having sort of back and forth with a company regarding new classroom space, and I think we sent you all a picture today of sort of one aspect, no, I've, I'll, I'll tell you, I've got about, yes, I've got about five different floor plans of classrooms, so, there are all kinds of, you know, layouts, and depending on where we would, if we decide to do something, where we would put it, you know, whether we could get away without bathrooms, you know, so we could have more classroom space, there's all kinds of things.
So a question to you on this classroom, sorry, are these classrooms gonna fit thirty people? What's the, what's the, what's the capacity?
Those particular classrooms, probably not quite thirty, probably more like twenty-five.
Okay, all right.
And it's, and, but I will also tell you that, for example, if you look at that configuration-
Yep.
-you're seeing where the walls are, those, that configuration in and of itself can move, so those walls can move in, so your foyer becomes a hallway, and so you have a bathroom that's associated with one classroom, a bathroom that's associated with the other classroom.
So you could squeeze in, we could, because it'll never be more than thirty.
Right, and, and which is typically nine hundred square feet, however, typically when you get modular classrooms, they're almost never nine hundred square feet, so they, they're more, they're usually more the seven hundred and fifty square foot range, sometimes eight hundred.
So we could move them around, so, all right.
We could move it around, all kinds of configurations, I think I gave you the numbers.
Can I just say something, one thing about, about this, 'cause I feel like I'm partially responsible for this, 'cause I, I brought up the question of purchasing new.
Yeah.
I, I, my purpose of asking for this was, if we were gonna spend, if we were getting a cost of about eighty grand to move the older one, what would be comparable, is it comparable to buying a new one?
Yeah.
I didn't imply that we should be buying a new one-
Right.
But just to take a look at it.
Nope, that's fair, that's a fair point.
Okay.
And, and again, it, it's, it's, the hundred and fifty, I think, which is the number I put out there, as far as, you know, estimating a lease, that's high, I gotta tell you, I, I would be shocked and amazed if, if all of the site work that we're talking about is more than twenty, to be honest with you, but I decided I was gonna give you a high note.
Still a big price tag to, to move, still a big price tag to put, I don't know, I have a hard time with it.
No, 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 I, I understand, but that's, the, the other thing is, is comparables, and the, and keep this in mind, and, and I know John had a little discussion, he hasn't had the, the final numbers yet, but the annex is a bigger space than this space is.
Right.
So, one of the things that was kicked around, I know he kicked around with his person today, he hasn't received the actual numbers yet, was, in, in a sense, a little King Solomon-type work of splitting the baby, and taking, I guess, two-thirds of the annex and bringing it over here, and then taking the other third, and perhaps giving it to the highway department for their needs, which is possible.
Yeah, I, I think, we, we started this conversation with the annex about, hey, we have this free space, what are we gonna do with it, with this free space is turning into not so free-
Right, no, it's never free.
-to a hundred thousand dollar price tag, and I just, I personally don't know if it's, I don't know, that's a, that's a big price tag to move over something.
So the other question was gonna be, we were gonna have someone come out and look at-
They, they have, they just haven't gotten back with the number.
What's the bill of health on that?
Okay.
No, 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 what, is it still in good shape, is it, is it worth moving?
Yes, the only, the only thing that really needs to be done to it is what we expected needed to be done to it, which was the floor, which we, I think we told you about.
And so what was the rough cost, a hundred grand to move it?
Uh-
Site work, plumbing, redoing the floor.
That was, that was a rough number, I think, I think it's actually gonna come in less than that.
So we're still talking sixty?
I mean, for free space, that's a, that's a, that's a big price tag, so that's about the question of-
And it's a hundred and fifty for new space, which would be smaller.
Right, but I think John is, I think John's speculating, again, he hasn't received the number yet, I think John's speculating that the number they're gonna come in for a move and reinstall, not counting the, the plumbing and electrical, which is separate for both of them, okay, but the move itself and, and reinstall, without plumbing and electrical, is, is probably gonna be considerably less than a hundred thousand dollar figure.
What are you doing on the eighteenth of December?
What am I doing?
I'd like for you to come back and talk about phones and annex moves.
I'm always here.
Okay.
I love you guys.
We, we still are up against the deadline, right?
Well, don't say that, you'll learn to not.
We have a, we have a defined timeline to make a decision on moving.
Didn't they want the answer by the end of the year?
No.
They need the answer, but they need the answer soon.
January.
Well, not too much longer.
Well, that's not the end of the year.
No, but you know what, let's, let's try to have another conversation on the eighteenth-
That's fine.
When we have, so we now have the new-
Yeah.
There's no other new cost coming in, this is it.
This is it, I, well, he, he's gonna get a quote from his guy, but his, if anything, that quote will be the same or less.
So we will, we'll have two new quotes and a true cost of moving it.
Yes, you'll have an absolute true cost.
With site work and everything, so literally, unless something happens in the move, but we will know what it's gonna cost to transport it-
Yep.
-to cut trees down, we have to ask the arborist-
Yep.
-and, and get permission from the tree warden, there's a tree warden in town, and then-
Okay.
-and then plant that thing there, so we will potentially have that for the eighteenth.
So I, I probably shouldn't say this on camera, I can't come and cut down the tree in the middle of the night.
You can, that's what they did on, outside of Victory Lane, and then the tree warden went to the Board of Selectmen and screamed, so, you could do it, it's just repercussions.
Promise not to do it, Mr. Tree Warden.
What else do we need to know about this? Are we just on hold until...
I think we're on hold until we get the additional information.
Anything else, Carrie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
You've started this process.
I know. But you did.
Robin?
I'm good.
Anything else from a budget standpoint?
Well, I think, yeah, I think the only other thing is, is we have some documents out now with our administrators, and we're working on it.
You're doing a good job with this stuff, Terry. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So my question for you, how, how deep of a wormhole and how many hours do you think it will be?
Of what?
For the, for the coding?
The coding?
Yeah.
I would, I think I want to refuse to answer that on the grounds it may incriminate me. I don't, I honestly, it's, it's a mess. I honestly think that before I'm done, I'll basically create a new chart of accounts.
Well, we were talking about that in the pre-meeting as well. So here's what I'll tell you. I work in a records management system, and I'm going in looking, and I always find something. And the next thing you know, you ask a question, and you start to peel the yarn, the string, and you're 12, 15, 20 hours later fixing a mistake. So I, although I'm not in a chart of accounts, and I feel your pain, I know exactly what you're going through.
The good news, in a sense, is that in the conversion to Munis, we're going to need to create a new chart of accounts anyways. So exposing some of this now is actually, the silver lining is, it's a good thing, that we're finding it out now.
Sorry to have to go through it, but that's why we brought you on, because you can identify it and fix it and make it right.
Yep.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Phone update, budget update. We're not doing the standard-based report card survey. And that's it, right, for you? Do you have anything else, Nancy?
No.
Strategic planning? Well, we did it. And the FY '20 budget process, they're just kind of, those are placeholders. But I think we're making some progress. Oh, there is some follow-up. I won't talk about Terry like he's not still here, but there's some follow-up to the athletics that, after we have meetings, just on some of the, some of the formatting and some of the, bringing it all together. But I, just so we're all clear, I'll send an email on that tomorrow. This was a good presentation.
Yeah, it was great.
It was, it was a nice blend of what we're doing programmatically, what we're looking at budget-wise, and just kind of the process itself. Shame on the committee for not asking more detailed questions ahead of time, but now we have, so now we can, we can move ahead. Anything? I think that's it for us. And I did, I did talk about the tri-board.
Yes.
I think that's a, it's going to be a good thing. I don't think either one of you were on last year. No, you, Carrie, were you on for the tri-board? No, you weren't.